A little, a little over thirty-four percent of all students in the Philadelphia City School District are proficient in the English language. Twenty percent of all students in the Philadelphia City School District are proficient in math. Nine percent of that number are black and brown students that are proficient in math. Nine percent. Twenty-four percent of the original thirty-four percent of links proficiency are black and brown children at twenty-four percent English proficiency. If you haven't noticed by these statistics, we have a state of emergency as relates to literacy, mathematics, and education all around. And this evening, our conversation, we want to do two things. One, we want to engage you all to be worried about these numbers. Right? Because some of you probably had no idea these numbers were that bad. And so we want to engage, uh, we want you to be upset and enraged about these numbers just as well as we are. And then we want to have a conversation geared around not pointing the fingers at who's the blame or how we got this way, but what can we do to move forward so these numbers are changed in a dramatic way? And I believe we can do that. So I want to pose the first question as our, um, topic for this town hall is every church, a school initiative. And I want to pose this question to each of the panelists. Hearing these alarming statistics and numbers, uh, there was a time when the church was known specifically during the civil rights era, where there was segregation in schools where our children could not go to the public schools. And so we were forced to open our church doors and educate our children. And now that, uh, the desegregation of schools has taken place and now we're allowed in these spaces, how can we get back to every school, every church, a school initiative? We have classrooms we're not using, uh, venue spaces we're not using. And when we say every church or school initiative, we don't necessarily mean, uh, K through twelve. Uh, Pastor Joshua was talking about learning centers, after school programs, summer programs, uh, daycare centers, preschools that can, uh, prepare our children for kindergarten, first and second grade. So I want to pose that question. How can the churches get back into that every church, a school initiative? What can we realistically do? And we can start with Superintendent Ballmer, we can work our way down if that's all right. Thank you.
I think what we can realistically do is take a realistic approach and examination of the data. The data informs decision. What we can do is exactly, uh, what I find is that most times we take what should be simple and what really is simple, and we overcomplicate it, much to your point Pastor Josh, with politics. The important thing to remember is that the church is not a political institution. The, the church is the body of Christ. Scripture says that the government shall be upon his shoulders. Everybody I've seen got some shoulders to it. If policy, the apparatus of government is going to be heightened, I would make the assessment that it is going to require the church to stand up tall. The more the body stands up tall, the more these issues become a bit more clarified. We are at the helm, the black church is always and has always been at the helm of every great revolution in time.
Yes.
That there, there, there's no discussion about it. The question is, will we do or will we continue to be dormant?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, um, I really appreciate that comment. I, I think, um, one of the things that we can do in terms of just low hanging fruit. If you are a pastor of a church or if you are a leader in a church, I think one of the first things that's very important is to first gather all of your young people. Start to gather all of your young people. And then the reason why I say gather all of your young people is that when I was working with young people, I discovered that a lot of young people do deviant things because they're anonymous. I'm not known. But when you gather young people and now they feel like somebody knows me, somebody cares about me, they are more likely to start to align with where you're trying to take them. And so when I say gather young people, I'm talking about having a reception, saying, hey, here's Matt. I want to know what school Matt attends. I want to know what grade Matt is into, in, and I want to know what are some of Matt's ambitions? I want to talk to Rashida. What is Rashida doing? Where does she live? What is she wrestling with? What is she dealing with? And I want to keep meeting with them. Some of this stuff is just really getting down to work to say, wow, I met with twenty-five young people and every two weeks I'm having a gathering so I can get to know them. I can start to, and then once I get to know them, I'm going to start to plug them into mentors. And I think that's very low hanging fruit. Why? Young people do deviant things when they feel disconnected. But once you start to feel connected, now you feel responsible. And once you start to feel responsible, you start to make better decisions. So that's just some low hanging fruit that we can, uh, do to start to change the lives of young people as a church.
I'll say this, I think twofold, I'll answer in two different ways. Number one, I think that there needs to be a movement among churches to start going to school board meetings for our public schools. The same way we packing out this place tonight, and God bless you all, thank you for coming. I'm glad that you are here, but imagine if our local school districts could, would look up and see this type of crowd every time that they would meet. Um, I think that that is, so I think number one is holding our public schools, not even just accountable, but supporting, right? I look at it in Harrisburg, historic funding, one point one billion dollars for that, for Pennsylvania and historic funding. That breaks down to fifteen point five million dollars for the Harrisburg School District, right? But I got a teacher who I'm talking to right now who has thirty-two kids, twenty-nine desks, twelve math books. Where the fifteen point five million gone? That's what I'm asking. We, we don't have enough for some more desk? Well, we can't get thirty-two desks and thirty-two math books? That's a school board issue. If you're there at the school board meetings and if we packing it out like this, you know, now we show, we're here to support, but we also here for accountability. If you don't want those books, did I mention earlier those pornographic? I call them pornographic. Cause there ain't no way in the world, I think a kid should be able to not have to use their imagination to see body parts and sexual activity. If you don't agree with that, if you think that that's egregious, you should be at the school board meeting. And imagine if we created a movement of churches who will be at every single, we should say, we're going to be at every single school board meeting because our kids are involved, right? So that's the first thing. Secondly, the every church a school initiative, I just think it's just the proper use, number one of what God has given you. You know, Moses, what's in your hand? Right? What's in your hand? This building that God has blessed you to be in, I can only speak for mine, and I know there's more testimonies of how God has opened up doors for you to be in that building. Best believe that building should receive maximum use, it should get high mileage, the light should stay on, right? Why? If, if Jesus is the hope of the world, how many of you have seen Jesus's physical body? No, his body is us, which means that if he's the hope of the world, he gives us the charge to be the dispensers of that hope, to be the carriers of that hope, right? In November two thousand twenty twenty-four, I baptized four kids from the neighborhood who we would not have known except it be through the learning center. For, now, they didn't, they've been baptized, they're saved, they go to youth group every week, they're involved in ministry in the local church. Because guess what? The church has one commission. Go there for and do what? Make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. And teaching them, right? Who teaches a young man how to be a husband? How to be a father? Where, where's, where's the manual that teaches a woman how to be a mother? How to be a wife? Who teaches manhood and womanhood? I think the church is responsible for that. And I think that if, if our kids, you can reduce it to two or three hours on a weekend, Friday night youth group, and then Sunday morning, Sunday school. But I think if you spent forty hours with them and their parents through the week, that gives you a chance to do more than just teach them a Bible study story. It gives you a chance to disciple them and help them with their Christian formation. And so what can we do? We can do a lot, um, if we work together.
Amen. Let's give him a round of applause for that answer. Pastor Joshua said something very powerful about getting involved. The base level of all of this is getting involved. Uh, realistically, planning schools and learning centers can take a little longer than a year. Realistically, it's not something we're going to pull our kids out of school tomorrow. But what we can do starting today is show up to school board meetings, show up to parent teacher conferences, ask questions, back to school night. We can get involved to let the parent, the schools know we do care. I've been an educator longer than I've been a pastor. And I will say this, that decisions about our children, decisions are made for us without us. Because we don't show, we show up when they don't get selected to the basketball team. We show up when they, they don't get enough playtime in the football game, amen! We, we show up if the, if the, the teacher gives a little sass or a little attitude to their student. But we're, we're not quick to show up when, when the report cards or the progress reports come out or when there's missing. So we have to show them, we're here, we care, we're asking questions. And what resources does, I know the school's a Title I school. What resources does this school have that's outside of the, the eight to four thirty scope that my child is here? What additional resources are there? So you got to ask those questions and demand those answers, amen. So our first question from the audience that we're going to ask is, are the four programs discussed? Private Christian, cyber school, support, after school, and summer enrichment? Are they all funded by the Lifeline scholarships?
Let me first say this, there's one person you don't see, uh, well, two, Pastor Bob Oliver, who is funeralizing a dear friend of his and he's in California tonight. Another person is Lenny McAllister. Lenny McAllister is in a snowstorm in Western PA, and that's why he's not here tonight. He is our subject matter expert, our non-partisan subject matter expert. Last year this time, I invited lawmakers to come and inform us as to how the laws and education work, um, in Pennsylvania. And when I invited the lawmakers, they did politics. And I said, that's what made us reform how we do this. Since they came and did politics, now they're not invited. So I went and found a non-party, can I say it loud enough? A po, a po, someone who knows about politics, who's not married to either party, right? Who can just be neutral and tell us the truth. So, number one, I'm going to answer this question from what I know, but we will also ask our subject matter expert. And if you sign up for our newsletter and to hear information from us, we will give you a factual statement and response to any question that you have tonight from someone who had, who does not have a dime in the fight of politics, okay? Here's what I would say as far as the every church a school initiative being, um, uh, the Lifeline Scholarship and every church a school initiative. Yes, I think the Lifeline Scholarship, one hundred million dollars, um, that we should be drawing from those funds to support at least one of those four options within our local assembly. Absolutely. So if you, for instance, if you have an after school program and a kid has five thousand dollars a year associated with them, let's say they go to the public school. Well, how much is your after school program, right? If your after school program is two hundred and fifty dollars per month, um, for each kid, that's about twenty-five hundred dollars a year if it's on a ten-month year. So now you've drawn down about half of that. And that's a, that's not, maybe not all the money you need to do the program, but that's a good start. And here's what I'm saying, I've fundraised, um, in the philanthropic community that essentially is like this. If you have a consistent base of funding that you can secure, philanthropists are thrilled to help you cover the distance or the difference, right? So if you get forty percent of your annual budget from this Lifeline Scholarship, I can help you raise the other sixty. And when I say I, I mean, Black Passions United for Education can help you raise the sixty, uh, sixty percent or whatever that percentage may be. So yes, wholeheartedly, one of the reasons why I think we should walk out of this room and fight for Lifeline Scholarships together is because it will not financially injure our public schools. They found another fund for that money, you can go check that out. And then secondly, if you want to do this and establish these educational opportunities in your church, yes, this is an immediate source of funding that will be available to sustain your program. Um, so absolutely, yes. Uh, any of our other panelists would like to also address that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to, uh, say that New Covenant Church of Philadelphia is opening a learning center called Salt and Light Learning Center for Boys. So we'll be doing a, uh, we'll be doing a learning center for boys, uh, grades three through eight. And again, when, when you did the video with Dr. West, what we're really talking about here is dealing with that composition of a person. Dealing with a person's purpose, dealing with a purpose, a person's passion, and also opening those doors. So construction is underway, uh, in Eagles Hall, and, uh, you'll hear more about it. It's coming soon. Not to a theater you knew, but right here. All right, so we're excited about that. And, and boys, getting boys is extremely important. Because we see boys check out very, very early. And once boys check out, it's hard to reel them in. And when you put boys in an environment where there are no young ladies, you see something different. I'll give you this one example. I had a, I had a, I had a group of seventeen boys. There were no young ladies in the classroom, just met these boys, eighth graders. And the boy said, Mr. Barlow, can we sing? They got in pockets, they got in groups and started singing. The next week, as soon as young ladies came in, we not sing, we, they start acting up. I said, Janine, this whole class was different because you added the young ladies. And so young men need opportunities to be by themselves, to learn away from young ladies. And so that's why we're starting out the Salt and Light Learning Center for Boys. It's going to be a good one too.
Let's go, let's go, I love it.
Man, that's awesome.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I wanted to, before we started, I meant to say this, um, and it just was reminded. I want to, um, the panelists, I'm going to ask if you can keep our responses under two minutes, only because I actually want to get to every question that is asked.
Preachers to do that?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's tough, it's tough. You know, I'm have to do like they, they do in the church. But also, um, if you gave a question and for some, I don't want you to feel as though your question was skipped. There are, so far I've seen about four questions that are asked, four of the same questions on different cards. So if we, if we, if that question has been answered, um, then I will make sure, um, to keep moving with some additional questions that have not been answered. Amen? So thank you for that. Um, we're having a good, a good start so far. Uh, this question I want to ask to the panelists, uh, who would provide the oversight to the church schools? It's a two-part question. Who provide the oversight to the, who will provide the oversight to the church schools? Can you give an example of how the Lifeline Scholarship would work?
One of the reasons why I believe in private school, um, as opposed to charter or anything else is because one of the biggest complaints that I hear from teachers is the overregulation of them as teachers. They, they, like you were talking about, a field trip, in order to take your kid to a field trip, it's, yeah, six months of bureaucracy in order to do that. Um, teachers have to teach curriculum that they don't necessarily agree with. Um, teachers can't discipline the students the way that students need to be disciplined. Private school gives us a chance to have the rigor and accreditation that I think that we should want as parents, but also the freedom to educate kids in a way that we deem necessary. And so that's one of the reasons why I am a proponent for that. As it relates to Lifeline Scholarships, as I understand it, the distribution of those funds would be given to any accredited school, whether it be private, parochial, uh, charter, public, whatever it may be, those funds are accessible to parents just as long as you're in the bottom fifteen percent, um, of academic performance throughout the state.
If I recall the question correctly, the question is who would be providing oversight? I guess I had that same, I, I would have that same question, right? In a practical approach, we're talking about churches, right? So we already know what church, how church people can be. Excuse me, maybe I'm not talking to everybody. I'm talking to pastors now, uh, and leaders. We know how church folks can be. With that said, I had to take a look. I went to, I had the opportunity to go up to Harrisburg, uh, to see Pastor Robertson's, um, uh, uh, Learning Center. And much of what he showed me, the treasure was the children, but the added benefit was that the parishioners of the church are the ones tasked with the responsibility of overseeing the day-to-day function, right? So if I'm just thinking of it from a practical approach, not only do we have the opportunity, uh, to educate our children, we also have the opportunity to, uh, support and employ our parishioners, which then only creates a, an economy, whereas we are not necessarily expecting God to open a literal window in heaven. But now we have created an opportunity where it is an open window, an open opportunity for the people that we love and worship to have some work that they can be proud of every day. And not, not just being proud of, because it, it, that sounds like it, it marginalizes just one type of person, but we have parishioners, and you have parishioners who are retired, uh, who are, work overnight, whatever the case is. These are opportunities that we can enhance even the church as a whole.
Let me say one other thing. I look at it and say, let's say we were going to start private Christian schools here in Philadelphia. I look at it and, and I, I would say, well, why don't we have ten pastors who would serve as like the board of directors that would oversee the spiritual manhood, womanhood component to make sure that curriculum always aligns with Christian principles? But then also another board that looks over, you know, to make sure that we aren't doing things we scrutinize and criticize other schools of doing, right? So like our precious children who have disabilities, we can't put them off to the side just because we're private. We can't, no, we can't cherry pick our children and only choose the best out of our neighborhood in order to hit the scores. No, we shouldn't play those games. I think that we should have boards consistent with our strengths to oversee these schools to make sure that we don't have missional drift. So I will, I will add that layer of oversight. I don't think we need the government overseeing us. I think we can govern ourselves.
Amen. Um, if you all see me back and forth from my phone to the cars, I'm not being rude. I didn't realize there were some virtual questions coming in as well. So I'm going back and forth between the two. Um, one of our questions that was asked online is, there is a nationwide teacher shortage, especially in the black and brown community, black and brown teachers. What is the Black Passions United for Education doing to help in recruiting more teachers, specifically black and brown teachers?
Sure, so I, I wouldn't even go mention this tonight, but I'm glad. It gives me a chance to get my friend and brother at Alley U. I have a brother who, whose name is Anthony Brock. He is the, uh, founder of Valiant Cross Academy. If you can, look up Valiant Cross Academy. It's a private Christian school in Montgomery, Alabama. They have a, uh, a documentary on Valiant Cross Academy. PBS has it, it's called Fruit. It's a phenomenal school. Uh, Dr. Brock is opening a center for education where he is literally going to train teachers all over the country on how to educate specifically black boys and eventually black girls as well in Montgomery, Alabama. That's a resource that Black Passions United for Education and Valiant Cross Academy, we are currently partnering now so that we can create a pipeline of educators who know how to teach and are equipped to teach black boys, black girls. Um, and mind you, it's not just, this is not just for black people, but I'm unapologetically black, y'all.
Amen, amen.
Let me tell you how serious I, I know I'm breaking my time now. I, I was at a dinner with a very wealthy person and they said, why does it have to be black? Cause I'm black. And my parents taught me to be proud. And I'm not apologizing for being black. It's more than black people in this world, but I'm tired of silencing our mic or, or deafening our mic in the name, no, 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 no. No, no, no. We're God's people. I'm not black first, I'm Christian first. But God created us in diverse ways to distinguish us, not to divide us. And so I'm not mad if you say white or Asian or Hispanic or anything else, and you shouldn't be mad when we say black. I just wanted to clarify that. Black and I'm proud.
Amen preacher.
I, I, I will add, again, I'm, I, I'm, I'm very interested in mining the genius, um, that is, that exists in our churches. And so I, I think that there are people in our churches that would love to teach. There are people in our churches that could be good coaches, good mentors. And I think that there are programs out here that once we present the people, and I know those programs, once we present the people, those people can easily, uh, be certified in those programs, uh, to be prepared to teach.
Um, the next question I'm going to ask, um, and again, feel free, any of the panelists to, uh, jump in. In light of the intended plan to end the Department of Education, how will this impact? How, how will this impact this initiative of every church or school? And how will, how will it impact resources that are available? What is, what is the plan to circumvent this matter so that our students can thrive? And a second part to that, is there a strategy and actual plan to address this?
Let me first say, I, I characterized the woman exactly how she said it. I'm sorry, y'all, I shouldn't have did that on camera. Um, so, so I'm apologizing for being Josh on camera. I'm back to Reverend Robertson now, here we go. So here, here's what I would say about the Department of Education. To me, I think the question is valid, but before we get to that question, I think the Department of Education got some explaining to do. The Department of Education has been in existence since nineteen seventy-nine with President Jimmy Carter. It was created with the Democratic Party and the National Association of Education, which is a teachers' union. They came together with the Democratic Party to create the Department of Education. I'm just giving you a little history right now. And from the time that they've started to now, they haven't had a report card above a forty percent as it relates to white, black, or Hispanic learners throughout this country. Let me ask you all a question. If your child brought home a forty percent on a test, do they got some explaining to do? I ain't say explaining, I said some splaining, you, you, you got some splaining to do. Anybody, any parent in here, you, you, you got something to talk? We got something to talk, but not only do I have something to talk to you about, I have something to talk to your teacher and the school. We, there's a crisis. If we have, if you give me a, if you give me a test score of a nine percent or a thirteen percent, I have questions not only for my child, but I have questions for the educator. So although I think that that's a fair question to ask, how will that impact the every church a school initiative and the, and the funding thereof? But I think that we're overlooking our responsibility to say, hold on now, wait. I understand what this department is meant to do, but are you doing it effectively and efficiently for all people? And, and like I said, whether you're white, black, or Hispanic, you haven't produced a report card above a forty percent in forty years. So that, I will start there. Secondly, as I understand, and I, and I'm not an advocate or I'm not against, I'm not for or against the elimination of the Department of Education, I start with, we got some questions. I got some questions I gotta ask. And I'm still trying to figure out all of the reason for the Department of Education. As I understand it, it's necessary in order to make sure that discrimination doesn't happen, um, at a state level. I would like that to continue. I think that states should not be able to practice discrimination without some type of oversight. But as it relates to the distribution of these funds, as I understand it, these funds are not federal funds, they're state funds. And so the Department of Education would not play a role in the Lifeline Scholarship. That's also a question that I will have Lenny McAllister clarify and will get you a statement to make sure that what I just said is accurate.
Pastor, if I can just tag along to that, and I would certainly be receptive to hear some of those clarifying things. I think it's important as a church advances into this new era, into this new dispensation, that we ask the tough questions and that we ask the questions that we may not have full clarity or transparency on. The first thing I would think of is these Lifeline Scholarships or the Department of Education, how that all wraps into each other. I guess the first question would be, how does that affect schools that are practicing it now? So small, private schools, small, private Christian schools that are currently in academic motion, how does the Department of Education either support or not support those institutions? I think that would help get us to a clearer, more defined answer.
If, as I understand it, I think the Department of Education oversees public school education, solely public school education. I don't think, I'm not sure, but we'll find out. And again, I'm not, I'll tell you when I don't know something.
I think that's the most, Pastor, I didn't mean to jump in. I think that's the most important thing. I think that's the most important thing, especially when we come to settings like this, that we do not be afraid to ask the questions that we are unsure of. And it's responsible for us not to give an answer that we just made up.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think integrity is very important, especially when you're talking about our children. And let me tell you this. I'll say this, and I know Bishop, I know you told us to stay under two minutes. I'm violating. But I think this, this point that I'm going to make right now is very important. When the document Project Twenty Twenty Five came out and began to, you know, become popular and people were talking about it, I read it in its entirety because I wanted to know, to make sure that the media wasn't manipulating me. I think you need to read it. The media is playing a number on us, y'all. I've read the document in its entirety. I'm not pro, I'm not against, I'm not anything for it. I don't, I don't really, you know, after reading it, I don't have much of an opinion about it. I think you should read it. But what I do know is what was characterized to me on social media was not what I read, and I read all nine hundred and twenty-three pages of it. No, I mean, I just think this, as a pastor, my responsibility, you know, Jeremiah three says that I give you pastors after my own heart to feed you with knowledge and understanding. And I take that very seriously. I think that as a, as a steward in the kingdom of God, my responsibility is to be educated enough to give the people of God quality information that is true and that is factual. And so if I don't know something, I'm going to tell you I don't know it, but I'm going to do my best to try to find out. And I discipline myself to read the document, and I think you should do the same. If you have high opinions about it, and especially if you are afraid of what you may think is coming down the pike, why don't we just read it and then strategize and, and figure out what we gonna do?
I, I would, I would just say that if you, if you do have children that attend a public school and we know that the Department of Education may very well be eliminated, you want to be, you want to be asking the question, then what is going to happen to all of those federal dollars that would traditionally go to a public school? I know when I was running a charter school, we received millions of dollars for Title One, millions of dollars for special education and so forth and so on. So if you do have a child that is in public school, and if we believe that the Department of Education is going to be eliminated, we need to be asking the question, then where will those federal dollars go? Are they just going to go to the state or is the federal government just going to keep those funds?
Thank you. All right. So this is a kind of three-part question. I kind of combined it like six cards with the same question, trying to make it make sense. So first part, at times, there is a lack of funding for churches to effectively run their own learning center. How can churches get the proper funding to be able to pay their staff meals, materials for the learning center? Part two, how can smaller, private Christian schools that are currently open and are facing closure take advantage of this opportunity? And how can a church interested in becoming a learning center or private school go about structuring and implementing a program such as this? And then I'll ask the last part of that question after you answer those.
The first is how, how could a church get involved? Number one, if you, if you reach out to my staff at Black Passers United for Education, we will walk you through interests to your first day. We will help you raise, and I think that bleeds into the first question, which is, how do you fund something like this? Number one, you have to have a model. Entrepreneurs, let me say this. If you are a visionary and an entrepreneur and you're looking to raise money, the first thing you have to think about is sustainability. If you, and I'm saying this, I raise money from the philanthropic community, people who are very generous and have money to give. They are looking for people who have sustainable models. They're, they do not want to pay your entire freight. They're not going to pay your entire freight. But if you are building a sustainable model, or one day they start with, okay, I may have to fully fund you this year. I may have to fully fund you for two years, but in year three, you have some type of solid funding, right, in place where I'm not paying the full freight. Here's the thing with Lifeline Scholarships. Anyone who's interested in one of those four, I think, if you're interested in doing it with Black Passage United for Education, I think you should bombard my office right away. Why? Because if that were to go through in the General Assembly this year, which is in June, it would take about a year or so before the distribution of those funds. And you don't want to be starting once the funds are being distributed. You want to have yours up and running. And my organization, what I do, I help you to raise funds for that. But pastors, not only do I help you to raise funds for it, I introduce you to the philanthropic community that I raise funds from. Pastor Barmore will tell you. I'll, I'll, Pastor Bishop Davenport will tell you. We'll have a luncheon with a major funder and I will invite you there to introduce you so that, I look at it and say it like this, if Black Passers United for Education was able to raise about three million dollars in two thousand twenty-four, imagine if ten pastors were able to raise three million dollars in one year. Imagine if fifty pastors were able to do it and we were united and together and we have integrity and we have vision. So it's, for me, it's not just helping you get to, you know, how, how to fund it, is helping you become someone who can raise those funds yourself, and then we come together and partner for that. So, so that's how I would answer the second question. Missed me though. Oh, how can you connect to an existing private Christian school? I mean, I think you would have to ask that private Christian school how, how you can connect and. Oh, a private school that's in jeopardy of, of, of closing? How can we help, how could Black Passers United for Education help a private Christian school that may be potentially closing now? I think that very much so depends because if you don't have a sustainable model, I, I can't really do nothing for you because my, the philanthropic community, I don't have the money, y'all. Let me tell you that right now. I'm a budding thousandaire at best. So, so the philanthropic community is interested in sustainable models. If you don't have a sustainable business model, you're not going to attract the philanthropic community, which is where I raise funds to do these type of things.
Amen. Thank you for that. So I'm going to ask two more questions, then I'm going to allow the panelists to have closing remarks, if that's all right. I'm doing my best to combine these questions as most of them are the same. Appreciate it. So this question is in regards to curriculum. For cyber, for the learning centers and private Christian schools, what is the curriculum? I guess that would be for what is the cyber curriculum? And how do you go about choosing the curriculum for the private Christian schools? And I differentiated those because Pastor Robinson will explain the cyber, the learning centers, we don't create curriculum, we just oversee the curriculum given by the cyber schools. Private Christian schools are in control of choosing their own. So the question is, what is the curriculum and how do you choose?
For the academic learning centers, it is a public school. So as with the public schools choose, we have no say-so in that the instruction in the curriculum comes from a public cyber charter school. As far as the private Christian school, this is the reason why I'm interested in doing a private Christian school because then you have the agency to choose what curriculum you would like to have for, for your kids.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to say, just, you know, speaking from a very practical standpoint, that because of the, because of our proposal that we submitted for our learning center, and when I say our proposal, I mean, the New Covenant Church of Philadelphia Salt and Light Learning Center for Boys, we received a significant startup grant from Black Passers United for Education, which that grant enables us to do everything from construction. There's a number of things that we have to do to reconstruct the space. We've also hired a designer to start to redesign. We don't want our learning center to feel like a traditional school. We don't want young people to come in and say, oh, my God, this is school all over again. I'm out. We want them to feel like they're in a comfortable living room setting. And to expose young people to these types of environments that they're traditionally not exposed to automatically does something to their psyche. And I want you to, I just want you to just capture education. When you go to a bad school, it does something to your psyche. When I, when I, when I walked in Central High School, ninth grade, they told me, you don't have to worry about anything. You've arrived. You could become anything. It was the culture. They, they didn't care about what neighborhood. They didn't care about who your parents were, but if you showed up in that school, they told you, what's, what's wrong? You will run the world. And so many of them students, those students have simply because of the culture. So we're creating the space intentionally to, to make sure that we reprogram the psyche of young people. So we're thankful to Black Passers United for the grant that they gave us to, to kind of really get started on what we want to do for our learning center.
Amen. And I want to, yes, give them a hand.
So you need to connect with, you need to, you need to connect with Black Passers United and find out everything that they're doing.
To tie on to that, I would caution any leader to not see this as a get-rich-quick scheme, not to see this as a get a little pocket change. You gotta have a vision and a burden. Pastor Robertson, as Pastor Barlow has so eloquently shared, there's a burden at the base of this. Thank God that God puts people in positions and in rooms and in spaces to meet and engage and partner so that all of us, all of you can literally find the, the bricks, the sometimes missing bricks within the departments of whatever. Maybe they've taken them away from us. Maybe they haven't, they've held it back. But I think now we are at the, at the cusp of something, something. So, so I like to call, I like to refer to it as a divine genius that God has stirred up in Pastor Robertson and the Black Passers United for Education. So.
Amen. And I want to say this, as a participant of the Black Passage United for Education, also as a board member, I currently serve as the treasurer for Black Passers United for Education, I want to say this. For the pastors in the room and members as well, you start by having these conversations amongst your congregation because if you don't have that buy-in and you're the only one doing it, it's not going to work. You want to start those conversations in your church. If you're a member and your pastor's not here to hear this information, hey pastor, I want you to watch this town hall meeting we just had on private Christian schools and learning centers, and I think this would be really good for our, our church. So start having those conversations. You get the buy-in because you have no idea how a relative or a coworker of somebody sitting in your church would say, man, I don't have the space to do it, but I have the money to give to this project. And so start having those conversations. You would be surprised at how many people would want to not buy into your religious fundraiser but would be so quick to give to your community development projects such as a learning center or a private Christian school. So begin to have these conversations outside of this room, and I, I implore you a thousand times. It was already stated, reach out to the Black Passers United for Education. If you have any questions, if you have an idea, or if you have something, say, hey, you know, I think this might work for our church. What do you think? I definitely would recommend doing that now because Pastor Robertson is having these town hall meetings everywhere, not just in Pennsylvania, other states, other cities. And as this word gets out, Black Passage United for Education staff is going to be overwhelmed with calls and emails. And so I would reach out now while, while you have the opportunity. Amen. Our last question, then we'll have final remarks from the panelists. Did you know that it costs thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand to house a prisoner? And twenty thousand, a little close to twenty-three thousand to educate a student? How can we as a community change these numbers? And I guess as you're answering this question, you can give your final remarks as well.
Bishop, could you repeat that question? I hate to, I hate to have you be repetitive.
Oh, good. Did you know that it costs thirty-five to forty-five thousand to house a prisoner, but it only costs twenty-three thousand to educate a student? How can we as a community change these numbers?
Are you saying change the numbers?
Change, change it. So the person that asked the question, I would assume they mean how could we?
Try to flip the numbers. Try to flip that dynamic is what I'm hearing.
If you're in the audience and you ask that question, could you specify for me, please? Reverse it. Reverse the numbers. I guess the cost.
Reverse those numbers.
Are the funds allotted to the prisoner versus the student?
I don't think I can speak intelligibly to the funding aspect of it. I can speak to the practicality. As a leader, it's a fact that I go and officiate more funerals than I do graduations. It's just a fact. Ain't got nothing to do with nobody in this room. This is how it is. So the question becomes, if we know this, can we take time with every child? Can we take time with every family that has a child? The children that go to your church, there's a reason that that family goes to your church. There's a re, there's, there's a certain level of trust that is built. So my question to leaders and pastors, specifically religious leaders, maybe our job has evolved and we didn't know it. Maybe our job has evolved to not just be there at the end of trauma, but can we serve as a bedrock of hope and become stewards of hope in a systemic cycling that the people we serve sometimes feel like there is no way out? So I, I, I not only support, I am engaged with the work, the prophetic work of Black Passers United because I believe it is more than just about what the numbers tell us. There are stories to all of those numbers. And we are called to meet needs and be stewards of hope.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would, I, yeah, no, absolutely. No, I, I would, I, again, on a, on a very base level, I think that when we know our people that are around us. I think that when we know our people that are around us, we can demand more. So even if you don't start a learning center at your church. It's very important that your young people who attend your church are known by the leaders in an organized fashion. And that we're touching base with these young people on a regular basis, and not only are they known. But their stories should be known. Sitting in our churches are geniuses. And sadly, by the time when they blow up, we say, oh my God, that person was at my church. Oh my God, that person's on ESPN, he was right in the back of the church, why didn't I know them? And now you wanna get to know them. Now you want them to give a donation, now you want their autograph, now you want them to write a check, but when they were fifteen years old. You didn't pay them any mind. And I'll, I'll leave you what my son said to me when he was eight years old. He said, Mom, Dad, I may be a child, but I'm a person too. I would say to you, not only get to know the child, but get to know that person. And then, and only then, we can demand more because we see their potential, thank you.
You know, I, I um, I'll conclude with this, man, I, I have. It's been tough for me to wrestle with my own story. Um, and I tell it a lot n- now. And it's amazing to me, my own story, you're, you're looking at what I believe should have been a statistic. I graduated from high school on a first or second grade level reading. And it was because I was a major basketballer, major footballer. Don't laugh, it was a hundred pounds ago. It's late, y'all, I'm, you know, I'm having a good time now. But at one point, I was so good in sports that, you know, the education community I was in. Stopped requiring me to be a student and just let me be an athlete. And. Because no one knew anything until I couldn't pass the SAT, I passed it my fourth time. The first three times, I couldn't get above an eight hundred. And um so I missed twenty-five Division One A offers. And had to go to a one double A football program down in North Carolina, Gardner-Webb University. I get down to Gardner-Webb University, and my first semester, I got freshman of the year in the conference in football. And got five Fs in school. I introduced myself to, introduced myself to my professor on the day of the final. You hear what I'm saying? Three semesters in, I failed out with a point-six-seven GPA. And I came home and I went to my dad and I said, Dad, I failed out of school, man, I don't know what I'm gonna do, he said, I don't know what you're gonna do either. He said, you can't move back here, he said, you're a Robertson, and what we start, we finish. So I don't know what you're gonna do, but you can't move back home. I had a friend of mine who I grew up with, who said, man, I'll give you a thousand dollars to take me to Altoona, Pennsylvania. And I took him there, and I'll tell you off-camera what we had in the trunk, but it was years of jail. And we get to Altoona, Pennsylvania, and soon as we arrived there, a bishop who I was playing the organ for at his church in North Carolina called me. And he said, man, when you coming back down to school, I'm not coming back down to school, I done failed out. He said, what you gonna do now, I'm nineteen years old, I'm lost, I'm like, man, I don't even know this bishop like that, I said, man, I don't know, man, what's up? He said, man, whatever you doing right now, you about to ruin your entire life, aren't you? Aren't you? Aren't you? And the more he kept saying it, the more tears just start rolling down my face, 'cause I was scared, y'all, I didn't know what I was gonna do, I had. All type of stuff in my trunk, I was praying the whole drive, like, Lord, please don't let us get pulled over, I wasn't no guy who did all that type of stuff, I grew up in the church, I knew, right? I just was lost. He said, man, move back down here and we'll figure it out. So that next day, I, I loaded up my truck and I moved back down to Shelby, North Carolina, and the first day I was down there. This bishop took me to Cleveland Area Community College in Shelby, North Carolina, and enrolled himself and myself into this community college. This bishop was an earned PhD, he had just finished his degree. He probably did not wanna go back and do any more schooling for quite some time. But he seen that I needed help and didn't send me to school, he took me himself and enrolled on his dime. He didn't even have room in his house for me to live, he had three other pastors who were on sabbatical, who were living in his house, I had to stay on his couch. And that semester, we went to school, he taught me how to read, he gave me a highlighter and a Goosebumps book and taught me how to read. And from that time, now I have a business degree from the University of Minnesota. I have a master's degree from Evangelical Theological Seminary, and praise God, man, praise God. And I say this to the glory of God, I say this to the glory of God, talking about hidden potential. When I finished seminary, I had the highest GPA in my entire school. To the glory of God. And all of that potential was in me that whole time. But it needed somebody who would just forget about yourself. Concentrate on Him. And worship. I, I, I'm, I'm trying my, to keep my composure right now, because I think. About how that bishop inconvened his entire life in order to help me at nineteen. And I think we should do it for kids at nine, most kids don't type, have that type of athletic prowess, I did. We gotta do it. And so for me, it's the reason why, although I've had mean, angry texts and all type of stuff come to my inbox and all type of stuff. People mad at what we're doing, because it does get into the political stuff, I don't care. Our kids need us, y'all, they need us to fight for them. And they got the right one, I'm ready to fight.
I, I just wanna let you know if that, after, after this panel, if you are interested. In uh enrolling your child in any Black Pastors United uh learning center. Or uh New Covenant Church of Philadelphia's uh Salt and Light Learning Center for Boys. There will be information at a table uh in the North X, let's get this ball rolling.
Can we all give each of these panelists a standing ovation, please, as we prepare to leave this evening? Come on, let's clap our hands and thank God for these men.
Bishop.
Amen.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in front of the applause. But Pastor Bolo, the young men's school. Third grade to eighth grade, man, that's a very pivotal time, that's a very.
And give yourselves a round of applause for coming out this evening, asking great questions, you all have been a great audience.